All right, being as early as seven o'clock, welcome to the September 28, 2020 meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen. Pursuant to the Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Members of the public who wish to watch and listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner: WCTV, Channel 9, Comcast, Xfinity, Channel 37, Verizon, FiOS, and livestream at wctv.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing 1-646-558-8656, enter meeting ID 856-5126, 1911, then press pound and press pound again at the next voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment by following the steps previously noted, then press star nine on their telephone keypad. This will notify the meeting hosts that the caller wishes to speak. All callers wishing to use this feature will be placed in queue in the order they entered the prompt. In the event that, despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real-time access, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. Did you want to acknowledge those that are observing Yom Kippur today? As well as recognize the obvious that it has been 192 days since this board has last met in person. I do want to thank all of the town employees who have certainly been working very hard over the past 192 days and continue to do so over difficult and ever-changing circumstances. And while we are transitioning to in-person meetings for the first time in that period, we are certainly doing so in a different environment, and we remain a work in progress to try and improve these meetings so that folks can have more real-time access. I do want to thank John O'Neil, our IT Director, as well as the folks at WCTV for being here and setting up here tonight, as it is certainly a change for them as well. I've been with a roll call. All members are present, and I would ask that everyone rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have transmitted the Treasury warrants, numbers 12, 12A, 13, and 13A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
The motion from Mr. Bendel.
Second.
Second from Mr. Kyer. Discussion. CNN will call for a vote. Just by raising your hand, folks, we don't want to ride the tomb land anymore. It is unanimous. We have no minutes tonight. Our first appointment does appear to be running late, so we will go to our next appointment, which is with Shelley Newhouse, our Health Director, and Bill Kavanaugh, our Fire Chief, for an update on COVID-19. Good evening, Ms. Newhouse. Mr. Kavanaugh, how are both of you today?
Good evening.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
You're on a TV, so your face isn't as visible to you. So where are we?
We are at 10 cases right now, which is, we've kind of been hovering around 10 cases. We drop a few every couple of days, and then we pick up a couple more. I saw, in those 10 cases though, is, we have a few cases at our nursing homes. You've seen some uptick at our nursing homes right now, but those aren't included in my 10 community cases. The nursing homes are doing well. They're taking all their precautions that they need to. They're testing all the residents and all the staff. So they're just a little worried that, you know, like I talked to them over the weekend, they're worried that, oh, here it comes again, their second wave. So hopefully it's not that, but they're doing very well. They're doing what they're supposed to be doing. We'll keep in touch. So we had some changes in the restaurant rules starting today, which allow for seating at the bar. So I visited all our establishments late last week and went over everything with them. And they seem to, they've got it. They know what they're doing, so just got to really encourage people to keep up with the social distancing and the masks. That's just so important. Some other things that have been happening is, we had our first drive-up flu clinic that we did last week, which was FluMist, which was for the kids, because we have to vaccinate all the kids by the end of the year. And it went really well. We kind of did it as a trial run. Many thanks to the police department and the middle school custodians. They helped us out a lot. We really weren't sure what to expect, but it went so smoothly that we're doing a townwide drive-up flu clinic this Saturday from 9 to noon here at the Town Hall. And you have to register by appointment, because that's what makes it easier for us, is if you can go by appointment, we can control the traffic and the drive-in. So if we, if you can go on our Facebook page in the town website, it will, oh, here it is, John just shared it. So it's live tonight that people can go in and register. I have about 300 vaccines, and this will just be the first of many. So I told people when they signed up for the FluMist, don't worry, we have more, so we're just kind of spreading them out, because this is really early for us to be doing a flu clinic. I normally don't do them sometimes until November, but we've gotten the vaccine in, so we're just moving along. Hopefully Saturday goes well with the drive-up too. I mean, it's going to be a little different, because we'll have injectables, so we'll just see how it goes, and hopefully there's no hiccups. I don't know if, does anyone have any questions?
Good question, Shelley. Great work, as always. So thank you very much. Chief Kavanaugh, do you have anything to add?
So touching on what Shelley had said, you know, we obviously encourage the social distancing and mask-wearing, trying to wash your hands. The nursing homes, as she alluded to, Avinia Care especially, has had a few. They still have a COVID unit set up, however, when they're, when they don't have COVID patients, they don't have anyone in that unit that has never tested positive. So they do have a step down. They have some that are active cases that are symptomatic, some that are asymptomatic, and they have some that are considered recovering. We're keeping close contact with Shelley and the Board of Health to make sure that we have an up-to-date idea of how many active positive we have in town. On another note, we have been working pretty diligently, Rebecca Sanderson and Deputy Posey, along with all the departments, has actually have been working very diligently on getting the reimbursement together for the CARES Act, and now switching gears a little bit and working on the FEMA. FEMA covers 75% because it's been considered a national emergency. And the CARES Act, which was enacted by the Baker administration back probably in May timeframe, it covers a lot of things that the FEMA won't, mainly the school-type things. So we've been doing that, trying to rectify what we had already received, which was in the neighborhood of $315,000 back in June. And so we're rectifying that, making sure that when we, you know, we square that up with the House, with the state, and then there'll be a second part of that that covers from July 1 until end of December at this point. The FEMA Act has been extended indefinitely, so we're not quite sure when that's going to be over, but right now they haven't even alluded to an end date. So we're doing the best we can at this point to make sure that we receive any funds that are available to the town for their COVID response.
All right, so great work, both of you too. Certainly, we appreciate all the hard work that both of you and both of your departments are doing, and hope that people are following your advice, because I think it's been certainly a long six and a half months, and I think there's, the end is not exactly right around the corner. So certainly, continued diligence is going to be needed, but I want to thank you both.
Thank you.
Mr. How, I think it's possible that our first appointment may be waiting at the door. I think, mind making Mr. How? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
No, we have our custodian just keeping an eye, but we have not seen him.
All right, thank you, Mr. How. All right, Ms. Newhouse, if you're still there, I would ask that you join us for our next appointment, which is with you and also Greg Corbo of KP Law. Mr. Corbo, join us, and feel free to wipe down the service in front of you. Evening again, Ms. Newhouse.
Well, I'm here. I just can't, I can't hear you, so I don't know if you could just speak a little louder.
Not the first time I've heard that, Ms. Newhouse. All right, so we are joined here by Greg Corbo of KP Law and Shelley Newhouse, our Health Director. Just to set the table a little bit, 885 and 889 Woburn Street is known to many folks in town as the previous location of Whitney Barrel. It was sold in 2017 to an entity known as 887 Woburn Street LLC, and the new owner has filed an environmental notice form with the state to allow for the operation of a construction and demolition materials transfer station. This area of town is certainly one that we have discussed quite a bit, as it is directly across the tracks from the Olin Chemical Superfund site. Mr. Corbo, if you could perhaps walk the board through, really, what does the filing of this environmental notice form mean? What would that allow on the property? What is the process from here? And what options, if any, are available to the town to make sure that any concerns that we have are answered?
Thank you. Good evening, through you, Mr. Chair, members to the board. My name is Greg Corbo from Town Council at KP Law, and I'm here tonight to walk you through the process of how we get to a proposal to build a site assignment in a community to the ultimate construction and operation of that facility. To suggest that we are at the very beginning of a long process is no exaggeration. At this point, the operator or the proposed operator has filed an environmental notification form. This is the very first step in the process, and it's a filing under the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Act, or MIPA. And the purpose of the environmental notification form is to allow the state to perform an initial assessment of a project and its environmental impacts. So at this stage, the environmental notification form is filed, and it's reviewed for the purposes of determining what the potential impacts of the project are going to be on the environment, and what, if any, mitigation measures might be appropriate for such a project. It also looks at alternatives to doing the project, and whether there were other feasible locations in which a project, this particular project, could be done. The outcome of this first step of the process does not result in a permit being granted or denied, or any approvals being given or withheld. It's simply an opportunity for the public to be apprised of the fact that the project is being proposed, and what the potential environmental impacts of that project are. After, there is a period of time in which the town and other interested parties have an opportunity to review the environmental notification form and provide comments, either positive or negative, that are considered during the review period. Once the review period is concluded, a decision is made to either require an environmental impact report, which is a more detailed environmental study of the project, or not. And then, the decision as to whether or not to require an environmental impact report, if the report is required, then the proponent has to prepare and file that report. Once that part of the proceeding is completed, if the project proponent chooses to go forward, then you enter into the permitting stage of the procedure. And it is a two-part permitting stage to gain approval for a solid waste transfer station facility. So in the first part of the proceeding, the project is reviewed by the Department of Environmental Protection, who is charged with issuing a determination of site suitability. And in making this determination, DEP is guided by several factors that are set forth in the statute, General Laws, Chapter 111, Section 150A and a half. DEP conducts this review, and at the conclusion of that review, it can either decide that the site is suitable for a transfer station, or it's not suitable for a transfer station. If it issues a positive site suitability determination, then the project goes on to the next step in the process, which is a public hearing before the town's Board of Health. At the Town Board of Health stage, the Board of Health has the charge of determining whether the facility can go forward as planned, consistently with public health, safety, and welfare. In making its determination, although the Board of Health is not bound by DEP's decision to determine that the site is suitable, the Board of Health is guided by the same criteria. Now, during the Board of Health proceeding, it conducts a formal public hearing that is presided over by a hearing officer, and the town, through its Board of Selectmen, has the authority to intervene in that proceeding as an interested party. And so, it's a rather unique situation, because essentially what you have is the Board of Health of the town sitting as the judge in making this determination of whether a site assignment should be issued. And by the same token, the Board of Selectmen has the authority to participate as a party and to present comments either in favor of or against the siting of the facility at this location. As I said, it's presided over by a formal hearing officer, who then assists the Board of Health in making its final determination. The Board of Health issues a final written decision stating its reasons and giving a go-ahead or not-go-ahead for the project, and then at that point, the Board of Health's decision is appealable to a court of competent jurisdiction. So the factors that the Board of Health will be looking at, as I said, are listed in the statute, Chapter 111, Section 150A and a half. And I'll just go through these quickly, because I think it will be useful for you to understand, you know, the nature of the inquiry and what the Board of Health and DEP are going to be looking at. So there are in total 17 factors that are required to be reviewed. First is the location, nature, and extent of any existing or potential sources of public or private drinking water supplies. Two, the relationship of the site to groundwater elevations. Three, the proximity of wetlands. Four, the proximity of surface water bodies. Five, the proximity of floodplains. Six, the nature and extent of residential areas in proximity to the site. Seven, the availability and suitability of access roads to the site. Eight, whether areas adjacent to the proposed site have been previously used for solid waste disposal. Nine, the potential for adverse impact on air quality. Ten, the potential for creation of a nuisance from noise, wind-blown litter, or the proliferation of rodents, flies, or other vermin. Eleven, the potential for adverse public health and safety impacts. Twelve, the potential impact on agricultural uses. Thirteen, the potential adverse impact on wildlife or wildlife habitat. Fourteen, the potential impact of increased traffic volume on roads to the site. Fifteen, the extent to which existing solid waste disposal facilities are located within a municipality. Site assignments for new facilities are preferred in municipalities without existing facilities. Sixteen, the extent to which solid waste disposal needs of the municipality in which the site is sought are met as a member of a regional refuse disposal district. Site assignments in municipalities not participating in regional refuse disposal districts are preferred. And seventeen, the potential adverse impacts on communities within one-half mile of the proposed site, including the potential adverse impacts on the considerations stated within this section for which site suitability standards and criteria are established. Once the Board of Health determines that a site assignment can be issued, there is then, there are then additional permitting steps that have to occur, such as a DEP solid waste approval, a process that takes approximately six additional months, an authorization to construct the facility, which begins with a notice to construct, and then finally, an authorization to operate, which occurs once the facility is constructed. So as I said at the beginning, this is a lengthy and detailed process that has several checkpoints along the way, and during which the town has the opportunity and ability to make comments, recommendations, and to voice any objections or support that it may wish to show.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Corbo. Just so that I understand the process as you described it, the first step is really to state the Mast DEP conducting a review under those 17 factors that you just listed. If the state finds that the application is suitable, it then goes to the town's Board of Health? A public hearing is conducted with the help of a hearing officer, who I presume is from the state, and this board could, at that point, intervene as an interested party in the Board of Health's hearing to determine the suitability of the application. Is that correct?
That's correct. In my experience, the hearing officer is usually another attorney, a private attorney that the parties agree to hire to facilitate the process. And in terms of, you know, how the Board of Selectmen's role would work, you know, the way I would envision the process working is the applicant would present their project to the Board of Health, and then, once the applicant's presentation is completed, the Board of Health would then open it up to comments from members of the public or other interested parties. In this case, you, as the Board of Selectmen, would designate someone to represent you in making comments to the Board of Health, in the nature of a witness or something like that.
Okay. So I do have a lot of questions, certainly, and I understand that this is a lengthy process, but there's probably some limits as to the information that you're able to give us, but right, really, on the other side of the tracks is a Superfund site, and for quite some time now, the town has been opposing a proposal to put a transfer station on that site. The tracks basically spur up on the other side of that property, and the proposal or the petition filed before the Service Transportation Board for that would permit the operator of the transfer station to transload from rail cars directly onto trucks bricks, newspaper steel, glycol, biofuels, liquid natural gas, vegetable oils, wood chips, sand, and gravel. This proposal would be for construction and demolition materials. I'm curious as to whether, if this site was deemed suitable, if the assignment was granted, I guess, would that make it any more likely or easier for this site to be then used for the types of hazardous materials or that, I guess, I mentioned earlier might be, or is proposed to be used at the Olin property at that Superfund site? Does that question make sense? I could ask it a different way.
I think so. So is what you're saying is that if the proposal for the Olin site is denied, and this proposal is granted, can the operators of this facility at 887 Woburn Street accept the types of hazardous materials that are being proposed for the Olin site?
Yes, but immaterially of what happens on the Olin site. Essentially, with the same materials that has caused so much concern for that site, should we be worried that the future, the long-term future, would permit for the same type of thing to happen on this site?
Sure. And so, once a site assignment is granted, it's granted for a particular activity and a particular set of circumstances. In order to change the type of waste that is received at a transfer station, you have to go through a process to modify the site assignment. And there are two types of modifications. There are minor modifications and major modifications. I believe that a modification to change the waste stream is a major modification, which essentially means that you're going through the same process you had to go through to get the site assignment in the first instance, in order to modify it to accept this waste stream. So, I mean, in terms of process, you know, it's not something in which I would predict that they would get the site assignment for construction and demolition debris, and then turn around and be able to accept hazardous waste. But by the same token, it's premature to be able to answer whether it could ever accept hazardous waste there, since, you know, we don't really know what the facility is going to have in it, you know, in terms of infrastructure. But, you know, before that could happen, you would have another opportunity for review and comment, and another opportunity for this to go in front of the Board of Health to rule on the same site suitability criteria that it would have to rule on as if it was a brand-new facility.
Okay. I did see in the application that the Board of Health will be assessing a technical fee of $13,000, and that allows the town to review the technical data, obtain technical assistance, and conduct that public hearing in front of the Board of Health that you had described. So I'm assuming that would be to hire that attorney to help facilitate that process.
Yes, that's more of, would likely be an engineer or scientific consultant that would be advising the Board of Health on these particular issues, as opposed to purely legal issues.
Okay. Just a minute, Mr. DePauw. Certainly, we'll be opening it up in a moment. I did, it sounds like many of the questions that I have with respect to the specific environmental conditions that might exist on that site would be examined in the Mast DEP's, the first stage, basically. The Mast DEP reviewed whether or not it's a suitable site. It would be certainly looking at the existence, or the current condition of the property, and also whether or not it's an appropriate site.
That's correct, as well as, you know, the potential impacts that siting a facility at that location is going to have on the surrounding area, as I said before, with respect to, you know, water supply, wetlands, environmental issues, but also other issues such as, you know, traffic and impacts on nearby residential neighborhoods, effects on other, you know, areas surrounding the facility. So it really is a very broad-ranging study as to the effects of the facility. And, you know, during that time, it could very well be that there are changes made to the proposal in order to alleviate concerns that might be raised as to any of those particular items.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify one thing. I believe you had mentioned that traffic was one of those 17 factors as well, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I wanted to make sure other members had the opportunity to ask questions, if they may, and just go down the line. So, Mr. Kyer, do you have any questions?
Mr. DePauw wanted to go.
No, Mr. DePauw, actually, you had actually, I asked first, and I'll go with you, Mr. DePauw.
All I'm curious on right now is, was the applicant and/or his legal counsel invited to this evening, since we are discussing a... to this evening, since we are discussing a proposal from an individual?
He was not. So that was a call that I made because Mr. Rob Peterson is the attorney for the applicant. I felt it was most important that this board be educated by its own attorney, by its own counsel, rather than hearing from the applicant himself first. This is a very complex process and a very lengthy process itself, and I felt like it was the most beneficial for this board to hear from its own attorney and its own health director first to, before we move forward with any consideration of what the applicant was wishing to push forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Kyra?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to, I may have written it down wrong, the seventeen factors that are needed to be addressed, I thought you had mentioned that they need to be addressed by the Wilmington Board of Health, but that's not true. They need to be addressed by DEP or both?
It's both. So first, DEP assesses the seventeen factors, and if DEP decides that the site is suitable under those seventeen factors, then it goes to the Board of Health, and the Board of Health has to determine whether the facility can be built in a manner that is consistent with public health, safety, and welfare with reference to the same seventeen factors. And the court cases that have looked at this have said that the DEP's determination on site suitability is not binding on the Board of Health. And so even though the factors are the same, the Board of Health has the opportunity to consider those factors for itself and make a determination.
And if DEP determines that the site is not suitable, does it, it doesn't move forward?
That's correct. It does not go to the Board of Health at that point.
And, all right. And I guess the concern is based upon what Chairman Eaton mentioned with the Olin site right next door. So are you saying that if the track is reopened, because I know that we've fought against that to be reopened for NET to come in and do a transrail there, if that's reopened, does that open the door for them to utilize that?
So it doesn't automatically open the door for them to use that. As I said before, once the site assignment is issued, it's for a specific activity that is described in the application and approved by the Board of Health. And so if there's a change in circumstance or if they wish to do something different, then they have to come back and go through the process again in order to have their site assignment modified. So it's premature to answer that question. All I can really say is that there is a process by which that can happen, but, you know, it's not an automatic that it would happen.
Yeah, you know, I mentioned that only because one of the major concerns is that the train traffic itself, the vibration that it could cause could affect the slurry wall and the contaminated site which would be close to that facility. So, and then the other thing is, the Conservation Department here in Wilmington, it sounded like those seventeen factors, some of them landed right on their doorstep. How do they, you know, how do they fit in this process?
Well, so this is, so one part of a process is to obtain a site assignment from the Board of Health. But obtaining the site assignment from the Board of Health does not exempt you from any of the other approvals that might be required. So if the site has wetlands or areas that are subject to the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, then before they could start to build, they would have to file a notice of intent and get an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission. Certainly to the extent that the Board of Health is charged with considering wetlands as one of its seventeen factors, the Conservation Commission can educate them on that and state a position. But, you know, if it's something that is subject to the regulatory authority of the Conservation Commission, then they have to go through that authority. They'll have to get a building permit from the building inspector. You know, if there were zoning issues, they'd have to get zoning relief. So it's just like any other project where, you know, there might be a series of approvals that are required, and this is one of them, and you check it off, and then you go on to the next one, and it's only if all of the approvals line up that you get to move on to the next step, which is building and then ultimately operating the facility.
Okay, that was a good overview, because my follow-up was regarding the regulatory process of the other boards in the town, where we don't have that authority as the Board of Appeals or the Conservation or the Board of Health, yet you're coming here tonight, I guess as just explaining what's going on. But we don't, we don't have those authorities, because you mentioned that we can intervene, but that's just in the process of making comments as we're doing with Olin.
That's correct. I mean, as I sit here right now, I'm not aware of any permits or approvals that would come before this board.
Okay. Thank you. I want to...
Right, but if I could just elaborate, you know, your role in the site assignment process would be to speak for the residents of the town and to state, rather than to adjudicate or make judgment, you'd be stating a position that you believe represents the viewpoint of the citizens of the town.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to clarify about. Thank you. I'm all set, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, so I have a few things. The first is to kind of steal a phrase from Mr. Kyra. I'm disappointed that the decision was made not to include the applicant tonight, because when this was brought to us, this packet was emailed to us, and it was referenced at our last meeting. I had requested the applicant to be here so that we could ask questions first. So I appreciate that we're hearing the process part of it, but I think the project needs to be presented to us so that we understand it before we get to the seventeen factors that need to be reviewed. So I think we put the cart before the horse a little bit in the way that this is brought to us tonight. And I guess I would ask our council, have you reviewed the MEPAs' Commission of Environmental Notification Form that was submitted?
No, I have not. I reviewed enough to have a basic understanding of what the project is, but no, I did not review that entire report.
Okay, because that would be helpful for me, is if my, if I could ask council specific, because the seventeen factors, and I tried to write them all down, I think I missed two, appear to have been addressed in this packet already, based on the applicant's version of things, right? So he's already saying that there's no issue with wetlands and that the Conservation Commission's not going to have a problem with this, and that the traffic impact, because it would be going up presidential way through Woburn, wouldn't impact residential at all. Like, those were answered in this, at least from his perspective, and it would be great to hear if there's any concerns that we should be seeing, because when I read this, you know, at the initial meeting, I didn't digest this information. I wasn't prepared to discuss it fully because I hadn't read the entire document, because it's pretty large. But I have, knowing it was on tonight. I honestly had thought I just missed the letter inviting the applicant. I thought it didn't make it into my packet for some reason and that they would be here so I could ask confirming questions as to what's in here to make sure that actions and those, those actions had already occurred, because it would give me peace of mind, I'm sure it would give the community peace of mind, that, no, there aren't wetlands that would be impacted. No, you know, the traffic wouldn't go down residential ways, because he's already addressed that it, truck only. I didn't see anything in here about train. Truck only would be going up presidential way from Woburn to Wilmington, that there was access to 93 and 95 that would not require any traffic in residential areas, which is great, because I think that was my biggest concern, is this, this area has had enough impact. They're dealing with a superfund site that is looking at years of cleanup. They don't need anything else like this. But from what I'm reading here, I see that, you know, this was basically a nuisance parcel that the town had for years, and, you know, there's even pictures showing what it looked like prior to it being purchased, that's now being cleaned up. And I would like to hear more about that from the applicant, because reading this, hearing you tonight, I don't see, quite frankly, why, you know, what we're expected to do tonight other than to say, okay, so now we wait for the DEP review, because that seems to be the next step, and then maybe we'll hear from the applicant if it gets to the part of the site assignment from the Board of Health. And I'm, you know, as a community member, I would want to know more about the project before I would want to know more about the legality behind it. So that, that's kind of my commentary. You having not read this, I don't think I have any other questions at this point, but I would again reiterate, you know, for example, this, you know, here's my stream of consciousness that everyone loves so much and has missed hearing in person for the last 192 days. Today I called our current trash company, and I said, I need to have a plastic wheelbarrow picked up. And the woman at the trash company asked the components of the wheelbarrow, and I said, it's a plastic basin that's split. It has a wood handles, and it has a metal attachment where the wheel is. She said, it's a metal attachment. You have to call the town. Here's the number. I called the rec department. I was told I now need to buy a sticker for something that I don't think I needed to buy a sticker with our old trash company and that the town picks it up, not the trash company. So my question becomes, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Hull, when I buy the sticker and I put it on and the town comes to pick it up, where does the town bring that debris? And would this facility be something the town could then use at a cheaper cost to the town versus whatever we're currently doing?
In terms of where the material is brought, I would have to talk to Mike Woods. I don't know offhand. Certainly, we're under contract to bring our solid waste to Nezwick, or actually the Wheelabrader facility in North Andover. I think one of the issues that we would have to look at is to the extent that we're diverting solid waste, that may be an issue with our contract with Wheelabrader, because they, as it stands, we're under contract to bring our solid waste material there. So if the components of that would go to Wheelabrader, then I think we may have an issue if we're diverting it to another facility.
Right, for now, but contracts expire and get renewed. And I think, again, that would be a question I would want to ask the applicant, is, other than rehabbing a nuisance property in town, would there be long-term benefits to the town by him being there? What would, would he be offering kind of incentives to the town so that we would be saving money on different waste removal and recycling? And again, I would, I guess, put a pin in that question for when and if we have the opportunity to talk to the applicant directly, but that would be my hope, is that this seems like the type of situation that long-term, it would benefit the town beyond just having an old wheel, you know, wheelbarrow site with a bunch of debris on it now being an active functioning business in town. That's all I got.
Just, Mr. Chair, just to go off of what Selectman O'Mahony, because she did refer to me by using the word disappointment.
Well, you used that phrase.
And when I used that word, I was accused of attacking, and I don't accuse you of attacking. I thought that that was a fine statement on your half. But when I used it, Mr. DePalma accused me of that being an attacking word.
Okay. Well, I apologize. I didn't mean to attack you, Mr. Chair, by using that word. I just know, I can relate to the feeling.
I think it's a fine word to use.
I can relate to the feeling of disappointment that decisions were made a little differently than I would have liked to have seen them made.
Yeah, so let me just at least make one point clear. Again, as council has pointed out, if the Mast DEP determines that this is a suitable site, then the application would then go forward to the Wilmington Board of Health. And at that point, there would a, there would be a public hearing for this application, and there would be one after the Mast DEP has conducted its review of those seventeen factors, of which several of them relate to the environmental impact of this proposal and the current condition of the property. So certainly, this is not an attempt to prevent a, an open or public process. Rather, this was a, an attempt to make sure that if there were ever to be a hearing, which would require that the Mast DEP says that this is a suitable application to go forward, that wherever this hearing is done, whether in front of this board or the Board of Health, it is done with the environmental due diligence already completed. I have no interest in hosting a hearing where we do not have all of the information that we are going to want, and we are relying on an applicant to tell us what the condition is. There is no criticism of the applicant himself, but I just want to make sure that this board is well-prepared and well-educated on the condition of the property, the status of the application, and the ramifications if this is to actually happen before any hearing would ever occur. And again, I think the Mast DEP is the first step in the process, if I'm understanding council correctly. And once that process is wrapped up, if Mast DEP determines that it may be a suitable site, then the town, I'm presuming, would be privy to the investigation the Mast DEP went through on the condition of this property. So many of the, while we can look at a 454-page application and think that's a lot, I would imagine that at the end of Mast DEP's investigation, it's going to be pretty voluminous, and there's going to be a lot more information to digest. But further, to a point that Mr. Kyra made, this board is not the Board of Adjudication for this proposal. The Board of Health is. And we may intervene as an interested party in front of the Board of Health if it gets to that point, but I want to be very wary of inviting an applicant in for any development where we are not the forum for an adjudication. I think recent history shows that that is something that sends a very mixed message to folks in town, and I want to be very clear that, as council has stated, the Board of Health would be the venue for the applicant to, if it got to that point, to move forward with this, and not the Board of Selectmen. And the Board of Selectmen may intervene as an interested party, but we are not the final adjudicators of whether or not this proposal is to move forward. So I certainly do not want to host a meeting where members of this board don't have the opportunity to review all of the information that they're going to want so that their questions can be more pointed and more precise. But it, I want to make sure that the process plays itself out and some of those answers, some of those questions get answered during it. So again, it's certainly not an attempt to move things out of the private. It's actually more of a, an effort to try and make sure that the process, as it takes place, allows board members to more adequately advocate on behalf of the residents of town, again, if Mast DEP determines that that's something that could move forward.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask one additional question?
Sure.
The DEP review, is there any cost to the town for that review to occur?
I'm sorry, any cost?
Any cost, yes. I forgot to add, it was one of the questions, kind of when you were going through the process, at any point in the process, is there an expense to the town that we kind of incur because the process is happening? Like, when the DEP reviews it, there's no, there's no cost to the town for that, correct?
Not that I'm aware of. Mr. Hull, do you?
So I would just note that, that at this point, the town has hired Geo Insight to review the ENF, Environmental Notification Form. That, the cost for their participation in reviewing that document will be borne by the town. The $13,000 that was referenced earlier is an amount that's based upon a formula that the state has for providing some measure of review by a consultant to be hired by the town. Again, the expectation is Geo Insight will participate in that process as well. Whether that covers the full costs associated with their services remains to be seen. So there are costs currently that are being borne by the town for the review of the ENF statement, and their, and $13,000 will go towards their review going forward if it gets to that point.
Okay. And would Geo Insight at some point be preparing a report for us to review, or do we stay out of it until it gets to the site assignment phase?
So Geo will be working with the Board of Health and Shelley Newhouse as part of the review process that they would have to go through.
Okay. So we can hear about it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Tony Colbo, thank you very much. Mr. Hull, I'm not seeing that, uh, Mr. Dan Gisley is, is present, so perhaps we can move on to communications for now.
Yes. Uh, first, under, uh, communications, uh, is a memo from me with regard to, uh, the recovery and remembrance event that is, uh, as you know, has been a, um, a standing event now for several years, uh, sponsored by Samantha Reeve and the Substance Abuse Coalition. Uh, this year, as a consequence of, uh, uh, the COVID situation, this, the event has changed up a little bit. Uh, it is scheduled to take place on October 15th, starting at 5:30 PM here at the Town Common. Uh, it was initially planned, uh, to be held at the, uh, Bilrika Town Common, uh, but due to some logistical issues, uh, the, the request that came in Friday, in fact, uh, was to have it here and that's why, um, it was not provided or presented as a board to consider because, as you know, the board, uh, does not meet again until, uh, the 13th. Uh, and for just, uh, logis- logistics and getting, um, uh, all the setup required, there was a, a need to, the timeliness was an issue. So, uh, based upon my conversation with the chair, it was deemed, uh, appropriate to allow for this event to take place on the Town Common on the 15th. It is a regional event, uh, there are 10 communities that have been invited. Uh, due to the restrictions associated with, uh, public gatherings, uh, of this type, uh, there's a maximum of 50 people that can attend and so as a consequence, um, given that there are other, there, there will other, be other people, uh, present, uh, the communities are asked to, um, uh, send not more than three representatives, uh, from, uh, each And so to that point, to the extent that members of the board, uh, would be interested in participating, if you could, uh, let Beverly know, uh, and that way we can, uh, confirm who will be attending on behalf of the, uh, town. I, I would note that, uh, Ms. Reeve and the police chief, uh, will also be present and actually be speaking, as I understand it. Uh, next is-
Mr. Chair, a question on that. This is a great program and there's no one better than Samantha Reeve. Uh, we, we were the first community to, um, take on such a health, um, person and coordinator. You know, we, we, and we did that, what, about three years ago? I am concerned, though, that it's going to go above 50 people. It, it, I mean, you're not going to be able to do anything if you have more than 50 people there. Is that correct? I mean, you're asking each community to keep it to three, but then you're, you're going to be highlighting those individual who, who passed, um, as she's done before with the pictures and the screens and, and you have various people speaking. Are we comfortable with knowing that it's going to go above 50? Because I, I can't imagine that it's not going to go above 50. I can't imagine that you, we would say no to a, a grieving parent or grandparent, uh, of someone who lost their life, uh, to this, you know, disastrous opioid, uh, crisis. So, I mean, we're not going to have, um, the police going around saying you can't attend if we have 75 or 100 people there. Because I've gone and it, it gets pretty crowded.
Right.
And I'm assuming that people will be socially distant for the most part and have masks and-
Right, well, so the, the-
So as long, you know, as long as this board realizes that, I, I don't know what the impact is, I don't know, all I know is you can't have more than 50 in gatherings. I mean, I think it's a, it's a, something we should have, but I just don't, I can't see our police department going around and saying to, uh, various people, you know, here's where the line stops. You people in the back have to leave. Cause then you're, you're setting up a, an issue.
Right, the, so the intent by, uh, trying to cap the, uh, participants to three per community, assuming all 10 communities were to send three people, that's 30. Um, the, the remaining 20, uh, w- would be a combination of, uh, Samantha and, and the chief and, uh, other people who may choose to attend, but I, but I get your point that-
I get it, I just want to make sure that our police department, who will be down there, will not, you know, uh, all of a sudden ask people to leave. I don't think that's appropriate.
Right, I think the intent is to try to limit it to 50 if it turns out, uh, you know, there are 15 or 20 people m- more that come in from Wilmington or someplace else. I, I don't expect they'll be directed to leave. I think they, the, the expectation will be that they socially distance and wear masks.
Yeah. And I'm sure that Samantha, uh, our chief will remind them that when they're speaking.
Right.
Yeah.
Next is a memo, uh, just, uh, as a highlight and reminder of the EPA, uh, comment deadline. Uh, the words, uh, on the 22nd of September, uh, was the, uh, virtual public comment, uh, period, uh, comments were offered on behalf of the town. Uh, and in addition to that, there will be, uh, separate comments, uh, written comments, uh, that will be, uh, made, uh, by Geo Insight, our, uh, consulting firm that has been reviewing, uh, the particulars on this. Uh, whether the comments are made in, uh, in writing, as is the case with Geo, uh, or in, uh, in, in person verbally, uh, at that public hearing, they both bear the same weight. Uh, the deadline for comments is October 26th, uh, and in addition to the comments from Geo, which are of a technical nature, uh, there is, uh, will be another non-technical, um, set of written comments that will be made, uh, in consultation with town council and some of our, uh, staff. And in fact, uh, the last, the last time we had a, uh, Zoom session, uh, Chairman Eaton and Selectman Kyra were involved, so I would expect a, a similar, uh, process going forward prior to the 26th. Uh, next is a memo, uh, that was sent to the board, uh, back in August, uh, just, uh, highlighting a, uh, conversation, uh, telephone conference call that I was involved in with representatives from Textron. Uh, I was contacted, uh, to, uh, learn about what their plans are going forward. Uh, as you know, Textron over the years, uh, given the, um, the business climate that they were in, has decreased their, uh, you know, employee, uh, group considerably and, uh, as of, uh, I think the beginning of the year, were some, i- in the order of 60 employees or thereabouts. Uh, and I, uh, have been in regular contact with representatives from Textron and were, was told that they have been going through, uh, an evaluation, uh, as to whether to maintain their operation in Wilmington at that site. Uh, they looked at other, uh, possible sites in Wilmington and other neighboring communities. Uh, and ultimately, um, what I was told, uh, when we had this conference, uh, call on the 19th of August, uh, was that they're planning to stay in Wilmington. Uh, they, uh, plan to do some site work there, they're going to be, uh, taking down several of the buildings that have, uh, not been used in some period of time. Uh, the, the remaining active buildings will be rehabilitated. Uh, i- in some respects, it, it sounds like they're taking a similar approach to the one that, um, uh, that Analog took, although perhaps not on the same scale. They want to, uh, create a, uh, 21st century, uh, environment. Obviously they're in, in, in similar, in a similar market in terms of recruiting, uh, engineers, uh, from some of the Boston, uh, colleges and, and want an environment that's inviting. Uh, so they have been in the process, in fact, of hiring personnel. Uh, the expectation is that they will, uh, employ, uh, upwards of 300, uh, people over the next, uh, five years. And as of the date of the call, they had already, uh, increased their e- employment roster to, uh, over 100 employees. So, uh, that's certainly, uh, good news for the town. Uh, and, uh, you know, we'll, uh, continue to be in touch with them about, uh, their plans. Uh, they did not offer any particular plans about, uh, the larger site. As you know, it's a fairly substantial site there, um, 60-plus acres, as I recall. Uh, and they do not have any plans at the moment for, uh, either the ball fields or the courts, um, you know, long-term, I think that remains to be seen. Uh, next is, uh, correspondence from the town clerk, uh, Tina Conway, uh, just providing, uh, an update on steps that have been taken, uh, to provide, uh, residents with, uh, information about the change in venue for the November election. Uh, one of the things that she doesn't reference in here, but I just wanted to point out to, for the board, is that one of the recent steps we took last week, uh, on our calling system, as you know, we have a, uh, automated calling system that directs people to, um, the appropriate departments. Uh, the, uh, preamble, if you will, uh, has been changed to note that, uh, the, uh, election, November 3rd election will be held at the Shriners regardless of what precinct you live in. Uh, and it also, uh, notes the options that are available to people, whether it's, uh, vote by mail or early voting and indicates, uh, gi- gives direction as to, um, the extension to contact the town clerk's office for more information. Uh, but beyond that, uh, information was placed in the town topics. Uh, the message that I, uh, issue as part of that, uh, document, uh, referenced specifically, uh, the, uh, change in venue and the options that people have. Uh, notice of the change in location will also, or has been placed on the Facebook, uh, page as of 9/14. Uh, postcards will be sent out to Wilmington households, to all Wilmington households, uh, as of the week of October 12th. This, again, will be information about the change and the options people have and, uh, contact information if they have questions. Uh, the, um, w- we will also be using, uh, the other networks that, uh, other departments have, uh, whether it's the Recreation, uh, Elderly Services, uh, the Library, uh, to get the information out. Uh, we'll be using the reverse 911, uh, to send this information out on three separate occasions. Uh, Tina, uh, and the registrars, uh, will be doing, uh, PSAs, uh, working with WCTV. Uh, and there will also be signage, uh, posted at the three locations that typically, uh, have been, uh, used for, uh, polling.
Mr. Chair, just, just a couple of questions on that to the, um, town manager. Are you going to engage in contact with, uh, Dr. Brand to see if we can use their, their signage in front of the high school for, e- even if it's for Election Day? You know, vote at the Shriners auditorium? Would you-
You mean the banner that sometimes has been posted on the fence?
No, no, there's, there's a, there's a board, sort of like the Rotary Park has a board.
I believe it usually says like-
The school department has a board, says have a safe year.
Yes, yeah.
Good luck. Maybe we could ask, uh, Dr. Brand if we could put some signage on that, that board? And I'm sure that they have an extensive, uh, email, uh, listing. I don't know if they would, uh, you know, say, send something out to their, um, parents to say, you know, voting is, will be taking place at the, the Shriners. You know, some cooperation from, from Dr. Brand may help us with that, is getting the message out as well.
Yes, uh, I hadn't considered the school sign board, but that's a great idea, so while, we will be in touch with the schools.
And, and also an email, maybe he could send out an email.
Yes.
And then just one other, uh, I, I noticed that, uh, she doesn't have down masks provided if needed. I mean, we all know that we're supposed to wear masks and come to vote for masks, but do you think that, you know, y- you should have masks available at the voting place in case there is a person or two that forgets or may not want to wear one but, but should? And we have them there available and I'm sure maybe reimbursement could come from the CARES Act or-
Yes, I, I would expect that we would have masks available, uh, if, if needed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I can just note, cause I, I know you're going to read them all later, but I just did want to note that there's, I think, like 35 days until the election and out of those 35, there's 14 days to early vote. So I think that's an important message for us to continue pushing out there. If you don't trust voting by mail, um, that's understandable for whatever your reasons might be, but there are 14 days that you could vote at the town hall between now and Election Day. And for people who aren't comfortable with Shriners or think it's too far away from their usual voting site, I would hope we're encouraging them and, and going to push that information as well, that they have that availability. Cause I think that's wonderful that, that the town clerk's doing that and that the town's doing that.
And I would note that if you call town hall, I think the first message is where to vote.
That's right.
Sorry, I'm done.
To your point, Ms. O'Mahony, the, stay tuned to important dates, it's about a page long.
Hey, well, that's why I figured I was jo- getting the jump on it.
Uh, next is just a, uh, public, uh, notice, uh, press release from the Planning Conservation, uh, with respect to the fall cleanup. This has been something that's going on, been going on now for a number of years. Typically, uh, it's, it's coordinated by, uh, Valerie Gingrich and her staff and there are different locations that people would gather, uh, around town to, uh, pick up, uh, items. Obviously with the COVID situation being what it is, uh, we're asking that, um, uh, people do this, uh, on their own within their particular neighborhoods, uh, and that, um, that they, uh, take that on, uh, on a more, um, lower key basis. Uh, next is a memo from Valerie Gingrich, Planning Conservation, uh, Director, with regard to a grant that we released recently received for $31,000, uh, to help us, uh, complete a combined municipal vulnerability and preparedness plan and hazard mitigation plan. Uh, as, you know, part of the intent here is to be prepared for, uh, the expectation of, uh, uh, with climate change, uh, the, the changes in wetlands and, uh, uh, the riverbanks and so on. And so this, uh, this grant will assist us in preparing this, uh, plan, which will in turn make us eligible for additional grants to, to the extent that there are steps, specific steps needed to fortify our, uh, our community for these environmental changes. Uh, next is a, uh, this correspondence, uh, public, uh, service notice, uh, from Public Works with regard to bulky items. This has been an issue that, uh, I know, uh, people have expressed concern about, uh, the increase in the number of, uh, bulky items, uh, at the curb. Bulky items are anything from mattresses and box springs to, um, chairs, furniture, um, bureaus, those kind of things, uh, which the town has collected now for, uh, quite some time, uh, through our collection agent. Uh, one of the things that, uh, apparently has been taking place here with the onset of COVID is, uh, and I suspect with many people being home, perhaps, um, they have reassessed what maybe they have in their homes and decided that they need to change some of those things out or, uh, or get rid of things. So the, uh, the, the number of, um, white goods that were being collected, uh, pre-COVID, uh, ranged, uh, from, uh, 50 to 100, uh, items per week and that number has, uh, increased, uh, anywhere from 150 to over 300 per week. Uh, so it's been a challenge for, uh, Casella to keep up with, um, the demand. Uh, also, one of the things, uh, interestingly enough, that apparently has happened, uh, as well is that in some instances, uh, where they respond to a particular home to make a collection, the item isn't at the curb, so as a consequence, they have to, um, you know, divert their, uh, attention. So I would just encourage people, um, to, uh, if, if you're unable to put the item at the curb on the date that it was- date that was scheduled, to please contact CASELLA. Their number is 1-800-C-A-S-E-L-L-A if you're not able to get the items at the curb. Also, this information is on the Public Works website. If you go to www.wilmingtonma.gov backslash trash hyphen recycling, you'll have the information there as well. They are making efforts to try to reduce the time lag. One of the things that is being done is for when a particular trash vehicle has done its route for the day, to the extent they can, they're having them also try to collect some of these items. Then finally, under correspondence, is just information, press release from Reading Municipal Light, their Public Power Week. Again, this is something that they've traditionally done for a number of years. Typically, it's at their facilities, their offices on Ash Street in Reading. Obviously, given the current circumstances, everything is virtual. The event runs from October 4th to the 10th. And some of the things that they'll be doing is a virtual storytime about electricity, kids' experiment activity, energy efficient, energy efficiency photo scavenger hunt and RMLD line worker video, Public Power in MA video. So these things are taking place during that time. If you are looking for more information, you can go to their site at www.rmld.com/virtual-public-power-week-2020.
All right, so we have three board to consider items tonight. The first is a request from Michael Berry. He's the co-founder and director of the Misfit Artist Company. He's requesting to use Rotary Park from October 11th through October 17th, 2020, for the purpose of a theater production, rehearsals, and performance. The Misfit Artist Company is looking to put on a middle and high school production of a Midsummer Night's Dream, which would actually circle around the pond at Rotary Park, and an elementary school production of Macbeth. Do you want to take a motion?
Just if I could, Mr. Chair, I did talk to Mr. Berry this afternoon, and he informs me that the dates that he was referencing for the production, which is in his correspondence or his email of the 16th and the 17th of October, which is a Friday/Saturday, in fact, he's looking to change that to October 17th and 18th, which is a Saturday/Sunday. Each day, there would be two performances between 3:00 PM and 6:00 PM.
Okay, are there any conflicts of those dates that change?
No.
Okay, and I will note that Ms. Newhouse, our health director, did recommend this as being okay, and Mike Woods, our director of Public Works, did not have any objections for this as well. So with that, would anybody like to make a motion? Motion, Mr. O'Mahony, you have a second? Seconded by Mr. Palmer, discussion?
Just a couple of questions. Mr. Chair, in Mr. Berry's request to us, Mr. Howe, doesn't mention anything about masks to be used, just talks about proper social distancing guidelines and for people to bring their own chairs for the event. So I would suggest that maybe you would reach out to him. I don't know that the actors would wear masks, I don't know, it might be difficult to do that. I think this is very cool, by the way. I think this is a great, a great thing to do, especially for the kids, but I think we should just make an effort to, to remind him that masks should be worn. I'm sure that we can't enforce that.
Yes, one of the things, when I talked to him this afternoon, he specifically pointed out was that they're, as much as they're looking to do this for the kids, they're very concerned about the safety element, too. So I will, in the communication that goes out, if this is authorized, I will make sure that that is part of the communication.
Now, and typically, when we authorize use of the Rotary Park, we, you know, if someone gets married, you know, that happens once or twice a year, it seems like, we explain to the people that, that this is happening, that this is a public place.
That's right.
And that kids can use the playground there, people can walk around the pond. So, but this seems to be that they're going to perform on the playground. So for those time periods, we're not going to allow the public on the playground, and they're going to perform sort of like a walking performance around the pond? We're going to somehow cut that off to the public as well? Is that what we're going to be voting on?
In terms of whether the, the public, it would be my expectation that, to the extent that the public wants to be there, they can, they're certainly not going to be barred from being there.
Right, but they're not going to want to, I mean, if they're going to perform their, their scenes on the playground equipment area, they're not going to want two or three-year-olds to be running around, I wouldn't imagine. So there's going to have to be something that will be said that, you know, you're not allowed to use it, I would imagine. Unless he's, unless he's not going to perform it on the playground, I don't know. But that's what it says in here. I just want to make sure that, you know, we, we made an exception. We did make the exception at Yentile, the basketball courts, but they gave about a half hour for the public to, to use the last two hours. So maybe just some clarification as to how he wants to do that, because he may have three or four families. I walk down there all the time with my dog, and there's three or four families that are always down there. So he's going to have to somehow tell them politely that, you know, he's permitted that playground and they're not allowed to use it.
Yeah, I'll have that conversation certainly.
I, I just want to make sure we cover up and that there's no issues.
Right.
And I noticed the concern from Mike Woods was the time. He said there's not a lot of illumination of lighting down there, and that he would have preferred them to start a little bit earlier, because it is getting darker now around 7 o'clock, and he wants to go at 3:00 and 6:00. And Mr. Woods is saying that they should be very aware of the fact of the daylight down there. So I, I don't know how long the plays are, if he's doing it.
He didn't say specifically, he did say that they're relatively short, whether, I took that to mean, you know, less than an hour, I, I don't know specifically, but my understanding is that the, the plays would happen between the hours of 3:00 and 6:00, so.
Oh, between 3:00 and 6:00, not, not starting at 6:00 and ending at?
That's right.
Okay, all right, between 3:00 and 6:00, all right, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that they're aware there's not a lot of lighting down there.
Right.
Mr. Chair, I think I had a similar concern, just that you can't really restrict the use of the playground during that time, so, you know, my hope would be if the families that are down there to kind of enjoy the playground might see that this performance is happening and decide to stay and watch it. But my other concern, and again, I echo that I think it's a great idea, and I'm not saying this because I don't support this, but if they plan on having 30 to 40 people there for the performances, for like the audience and the performers, I just get worried, you know, does that mean that kids aren't going to be playing on the baseball field at that point if there's a practice, the fall, you know, fall ball practice that's scheduled? Or does that mean that there's going to be restrictions as to the number of kids that can be at the playground, or because it's kind of so far away? I mean, that is a big space, that I would assume there would be ways that they could create more distance. I would just want to make sure that they understood, you know, and it sounds like he's saying bring their own, you know, the audience will bring their own chairs and kind of space themselves out, but I, I would just want to make sure that he's aware that it's not just his people that he's bringing in that they need to be conscientious of, it's also the people that might be there to use the, the park.
Hey, good point, and could I just follow up on that, Mr. Chair? I don't know if I heard correctly, did he say he wanted from October 11th to the, because he needed practice time down there?
That's right.
He'd originally requested the 11th through the 17th for the purpose of theater production, rehearsals, and performance. I'm not sure if changing that to the 17th and the 18th for the performances would then move the rehearsal time up to the 12th from the 11th.
So how does that rehearsal time impact the, the facility down there? So if they're going to do their performance on the playground, they're going to need to practice on the playground, you know, they're going to be there for an hour, two hours, you know what I'm saying? I just, I think it's great, and I think it's, it's really good that they're doing it, but I just want to be concerned for the whole community here. If so, if they're going to be using five days of practice down there, I hope they're aware that there are a lot of walkers, there are a lot of joggers, and there are a lot of families that use that.
Well, so Mr. Berry indicated that he lives in the neighborhood, he's down there frequently, so I, I took it that he's very familiar with what goes on there, but certainly I will make sure that he understands that, that it is a very actively used area, both the park, the ball field, and that to the extent that they are going to be having any kind of rehearsals, that they need to be mindful of other activities that are going on there, and it's really going to be up to them to, to work around the folks that are there.
Thank you.
Chair, I just would like to see, since we are offering these, our fields and things now, which is, I think, absolutely terrific, but I would, I would ask that the town manager would, with all these requests, notify the people that they are liable for picking up any waste that's there or any rubbish, and if not, that they would be subject to a cost if they don't pick it up.
Yeah, the, we'll certainly convey that, you know, carry in, carry out.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second. Is there further discussion? All right, we'll call for the vote, all in favor? unanimous. Second board to consider item is to consider issuing automatic extensions to licensees' license for on-premises consumption and granted approval for outdoor table service for a period of up to 60 days after the end of the state of emergency. Just by way of brief background, Mr. Bendel, as you appear to be pretty intent on this. Back in, back in June, we have a motion in a second, discussion, I'll go first. Back in June, we allowed for on-premises consumption of both food and drink at restaurants as part of the Phase 2 reopening pursuant to the governor's COVID-19 order number 35. Earlier this month, his COVID-19 order number 50 actually extended the timeframe from that from November 1st, 2020 till, till 60 days after the end of the state of emergency, which of course has not yet ended. This, I'll ask Mr. Bendel that you clarify your motion, because there's really two portions of this. There's whether or not to extend the approval for on-premise consumption of food and drink to 60 days after the state of emergency, and also whether or not to make those extensions automatic or to do so upon request from the individual licensees.
I like them both, but I don't want to, I don't want to in any way restrict our businesses, so certainly open to both, whatever's going to be more advantageous to our local businesses and to, obviously, the consumers here in town.
Should I interpret that as you are in favor of extending this to up to 60 days, to 60 days past the end of the state of emergency, and also to make that extension automatic and not to require these individual restaurants to come in and request it specifically?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a motion, Mr. Kyra? Does your second stand?
Yes.
Further discussion? Seeing none, go on for the vote, all those in favor? Unanimous. The last board to consider item is a request from Christine Tuna Conway, the town clerk, to appoint additional election workers for 2020. This is a supplemental list, the individuals are Jawad Alhadi, Lynn Ivazian, Jennifer Begon, Beth Bergman, Diana Kuchar, Judith Lee Dixon, Jennifer Erickson, Mary Ann Fogarty, Christine Garrard, Michelle Getchell, Christine Jorge Gilbert, Laurie Hayes, Jody Heffernan, Mary Holland, Lillian Huber, Ronald Judkins, Linda Canahan, Maggie Lopez, Kimberly Peterson, Charles Robinson, Matthew Savage, Laurie Towle, Alicia Verno, Christine Zook. We also have one resident under the age of 18 who is eligible to serve as an election worker, and that is Alexander Howlett. My apologies to any names that I may have mispronounced. Do you have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Ms. O'Mahony, seconded by Mr. Bendel. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you to those individuals who have volunteered. And that brings us to public comments. If there are any public comments, Mr. O'Neill, I will have to resituate myself in between Mr. Kyra and Mr. DePalma, as the microphone for public comment has had to be located there due to a cord length restriction.
We do have a couple of different public comments, but I will unuminate them first of all, Mr. Chair. Go ahead.
Yes, this is Ethan Sawyer, 58 Lawrence Street.
Good evening, Mr. Sawyer, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. So I, I just wanted to comment on a few different things. One was the 887 Woburn project. I think that you had mentioned trucks would not be required to go through residential area, but I think that maybe the question that should be asked at town council, or maybe you already know the answer to it, is can we prohibit trucks from going through residential areas? Are they required to go through certain routes and not on other ones? Because there's a difference between, you know, being able to take a route and being obligated to take a route. So that was my only comment on that issue. Then, the other thing was, I know that you had mentioned the Olend site and the EPA cleanup decision or that they're going to be making soon, and I just kind of wanted to reiterate to people in the general public, too, that this is one of the most important timeframes for them to make comments to the EPA, because public acceptance is one of the actual official nine points of decision that the EPA has to decide on when it comes to the cleanup process. So I think this is when the general public sort of has the loudest voice and the most significant impact in the actual decision process, because it's just they're going on public acceptance and state acceptance. And along with that, I know, I, I guess I think there's a lot to look at over there. Obviously, everyone knows that. But New England Trans Rail, you know, has been sort of put on hold, and the redevelopment isn't being talked about right now. But I know that the priorities list, the national priorities list for the superfund sites put a focus on redevelopment, and I'm just really concerned that we're going to end up with the Trans Rail, you know, shipping transfer station over at that site anyway. We have, New England Trans Rail isn't taking action right now, but they're sort of being put on hold by Wilmington-Wooburn Intermodal, and, you know, the word intermodal means multiple means of transportation. So to me, it's got to be truck and railway, and it's the only two modes of transportation available or potentially available over there. So I just have a lot of concerns that our cleanup of this superfund site and this mess is going to lead to us just having tons of nasty materials that we really don't want being transported by truck and rail through the town all the time, every day. And that, that's one of my primary concerns. And then, I guess, the only other thing I wanted to make a comment on, sort of unrelated to any of those projects, just had to do with the MBTA Advisory Board decision last week. I, I know that Selectman O'Mahony was appointed to the board to be the representative for the Board of Selectmen, but I guess I was a little bit confused because I, I didn't think that that necessarily meant that Mike McCoy was off the board. As far as I understood, there was nothing that specifically removed him from the board. I understand the Board of Selectmen can reappoint or appoint someone additional to be their representative, but I know that Mike McCoy has been on... be a good asset to that whole process anyways. So maybe if you could look into that and see, I don't see that there would be any reason he couldn't continue to, and I don't know that he's actually off the board at this point in time. That is for the MBTA Advisory Board. So I think those were the only comments that I wanted to make tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sawyer. Just so that, I understand your concern about the trucks through the residential neighborhoods. That's not something that I, I know the specific answer to tonight, but that's certainly something that we can look into. You bring up a good point about the Olin comment period that has been extended again until October 26th. Residents certainly are permitted and encouraged to make comments during that period as well. It does not just need to be somebody with an affiliation with town government, but certainly residents have been affected by this as well. With regards to the MBTA Advisory Board, Monsieur Mahoney, I know you are at least a representative of the town on that. Perhaps you can reach out to the MBTA Advisory Board and just confirm whether or not we're committed to have a second member as well?
Sure.
Okay, I think I got all your questions, Mr. Sawyer. Mr. O'Neil, do you have any other callers?
Mr. Chair, we do. We have Samantha Reeve on line.
Okay. Ms. Reeve, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you guys?
Doing all right.
So I just have to call in to clarify a few other questions about the vigil that's coming up in a few weeks. So it will be 100% virtual, so there will actually be no in-person attendance aside from kind of that special sect of, kind of those few representatives from each community. WCTV will be live streaming that on all of their platforms and on their typical channels. So folks, you know, who typically attend that in person or in other communities, who typically attend those communities, the vigils will be able to have access to this virtual one from their homes, or if they want to get together with friends or whatnot to watch. But just due to the restrictions that are still in place, it will be 100% virtual this year.
Mr. Chair, can I just comment? Samantha, thank you for that. I didn't read that in the memo that came to us, so that's great to know that it's virtual, other than those invited people to the gazebo area of the common. So that's great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Reeve.
I appreciate your clarification.
This certainly came up kind of last minute. I know the plan was it for it to be hosted on the Bill Ricker Town Common, but Bill Ricker Access Television was not gonna be able to livestream, and WCTV had stepped up and volunteered to do that, so this was kind of some late in the week, scrambling last week. So certainly, we appreciate your efforts to bring it here to make sure it still occurs, and also to clarify the form for it.
Yeah, thank you so much for your last minute accommodations. I apologize for it being the last minute, but thanks for everyone stepping up and letting this happen for all those people that it's important for.
Of course, thank you again, as always, Ms. Reeve. Mr. O'Neil, do you have any other callers?
Mr. Chair, we do. We have Mr. Peterson next.
Okay. Mr. Peterson, how are you this evening?
Mr. Chair, how about yourself?
Have a better.
First of all, Jen, thank you much for having the opportunity to speak on this matter. My office represents Mr. Anthony Martin, the petitioner of 887 Woburn Street with the project over there. First of all, I want to thank Attorney Corbo, who gave a fair presentation of the process and how it is going to move forward. I hope that this board is now apprised on how this project can be moved forward and the necessary steps it'll need to take, especially specifically highlighting those, the criteria, which, again, this is my client fully believes he is going to meet, but that is to be adjudicated at a later date. Another thing I wanted to jump into very quickly, because it was a very good point and very pertinent to the application, was Mr. Sawyer's comment about the traffic going into Wilmington up and down Woburn Street. That is a very good, something to bring up, and something my client, the applicant, the petitioner, had considered very thoroughly, which is why we have also been in discussions relative to our MEAP application to the traffic study, because the traffic going in and out of this property will actually impact Woburn to a degree probably much greater than it will to Wilmington, because it is a petitioner is going to seek to route all traffic out to the right down other industrial way out to 93 that way. So that's something that, again, will be further vetted out during this process, but it was very fair to bring up. So while we will see what the town can legally do to restrict traffic going left up Woburn Street, it will always be, or it is the client's plan, the petitioner's plan, to restrict that traffic to go out to the right, which is bringing through Woburn, which, again, we've had some good discussions with the town of Woburn about what needs to be done on that matter. So that's been very constructive, again, with our conversation, which has been very open and transparent with the city of Woburn, and even nothing to date but exemplary to work with. I guess I would just, the chairman said that we're not, this board isn't gonna address the specifics relative to my client, which is fine. I just wanted to offer a comment that the petitioner, by and through my office, is ready, willing, and able to answer any and all questions or concerns that any of you might have. So if you have any, anything you need answered in the coming days, weeks, or months as this project progresses, please feel free to reach out to the petitioner, again, by and through my office. I just wanted to take a quick moment to jump on here and let that be known.
Mr. O'Neil, do you have any other callers?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'll give it another minute or so.
Mr. Chair, I have four potential callers. Just to ask, Mr. Hope, how many representatives from the community can be on the MBTA Advisory Board, you know? It's always been the one that we've had.
I was jotting myself a note, because historically, as far as I know, it's always been one representative. As to whether or not that's set by the MBTA Advisory Board, I don't know offhand.
Okay, so that may be worth finding out first. And then, secondly, it may be worth noting that in the four and a half years that I've been a member of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. McCoy never reported on the MBTA Advisory Board to this board. And as far as I know, I had mentioned it once at a meeting, and he attended, from what I could gather, one meeting in the four and a half years that I've been a member of the board. So that, I'd love to see his attendance record before we consider his appointment to that board again. I think we appointed the right person. I think we need one person on there. I think Selectman O'Mahony will represent the town the right way, and as far as I'm concerned, that's a done topic.
Mr. Kane, I just received the information from Mrs. Alden last week. I can reach out and ask him if there's a restriction, and also about kind of the previous attendance and engagement, to see if that's something that's even possible, and I'll report back to you.
Okay, thank you. some good news, is one of our colleagues is going to be growing his clan, as Mrs. Bendel, Charlotte Grace, and Mr. Bendel are going to be expecting the third daughter this coming spring. So, Mr. Bendel, congratulations.
Thank you very much. We're very blessed and appreciate all the well wishes, and we're obviously very excited. Thank you.
I did want to also congratulate the Circulation Librarian, Linda Pavlik, who's gonna be retiring after 24 years after tomorrow. So happy Tuesday, but happier Wednesday to you. So any other announcements?
Yeah, I'll make an announcement. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Bendel, your lovely wife, I don't know how she puts up with you, but that's okay.
Good question.
And I don't want to step on Selectman O'Mahony's thunder, but I do have to wish Ethel Butters a 103rd birthday. It was Where One Wilmington, organized by Selectman O'Mahony, who put together a birthday parade that was just fantastic, and I participated in it and enjoyed it, and I'm sure she did as well. But happy birthday.
Announcement, Mr. DePalma?
I want to congratulate all the students for getting back to school. It's gonna be tough, but it seems like they're handling it well. So good luck to the kids going back to school.
So I have a few. First, it's great to see you all in person. I know it's a little different and weird, and I'm gonna have to rethink my mask game next time, because I do feel like I'm committing a crime right now. But it's great, it's great to be back and to see you all. I've missed you, as weird as that might sound. It's not the same on Zoom. The second thing I wanted to note is that, as you've seen on the news, the legal community had a few big losses in the last few weeks. And for those of you who know me well, you know my lapel game, my lapel pin game, these were all before these losses. But I would be remiss if I didn't note the loss of Ruth Bader Ginsburg, being a female attorney who sat for the bar exam, nine months pregnant with my second child, who is able to be a full-time attorney with four children. I, it is not lost on me that the reason that never seemed impossible or unlikely, or it was always doable in my mind because of role models like her. But I did want to note Massachusetts suffered a huge loss in that same timeframe that was really overshadowed, unfortunately, by Justice Ginsburg's passing. Chief Justice Ralph Gantz of the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court, which is our version of the Supreme Court, passed away on September 14th unexpectedly. And he is another amazing pioneer, for those of us who kind of are students of the legal system. He pushed through this Criminal Justice Reform Act in 2018 that really addressed the inequities of sentencing and how people of color, especially men of color, were more likely to get more severe sentences than their white male counterparts. So that's another big loss that we have suffered, and I, again, wanted to just recognize that, kind of given my profession and just what's going on in the world right now, and why those things are especially important for us to kind of remember and look at instead of feeling daunted. But on a lighter note, I did want to also wish Ethel Butters a happy final day of being 102. Tomorrow, she turns 103. I wanted to thank Kevin and Cheryl and their dog for joining us in the parade yesterday. It was a great turnout. She was certainly happy. And I did, I was checking with WCTV prior to starting tonight. She is part of that, what's it called again?
Wilmington Rememberers.
Wilmington Rememberers series, because I was saying to Ryan that she, I met with her last week, and she had such wonderful stories. She's a ninth-generation Butters in Wilmington. You know, I, everyone seems to be her aunt, so I was asking her how many nieces and nephews she had, and she said that that was a controversial question, because there's a different number given by depending on which sibling you ask. But I did also want to note one thing. She has all these scrapbooks of kind of the more recent years when she's been getting some accolades. So she was inducted into the Wilmington High School Sports Hall of Fame a few years ago, and it appears she had a pretty big 100th birthday bash. And in that photo album, there was some pictures of Jeff Hall, then Chair Mike Shampoo, and Senator Tyre, and it appears that they're singing to her. So I just wanted to be the first to say encore, and we would like to figure out a way to relive that experience if possible, because I think we would appreciate that, and I'm sure she would, too. But happy birthday, Ms. Butters. Thank you for letting the community share in it, and we wish you many more years of health and happiness.
Thank you. So Mr. Bendel has reminded me that we, it was requested of us by perhaps Wilmington's most active Twitter user to provide an update on Halloween. So Mr. Hall and I have been speaking about the town's plan for Halloween for, at this point, it's been about a month and a half. Traditionally, Wilmington has not set hours, we've not set restrictions, we've left it up to people. That is large picture, not going to change for this coming year. Mr. Hall has had several meetings with different department heads, certainly, of course, Ms. Newhouse. We will be getting out some communication on this in the next few days, but just big-picture approach is gonna be to stay home if you are not feeling well, to consider wearing a mask over your nose and mouth when trick-or-treating and handing out treats. Avoid large gatherings of parties and find ways to trick-or-treat while staying at least six feet away from others, including when handing out or accepting treats. And practice frequent hand cleaning. Bring a bottle of alcohol-based hand sanitizer with you while trick-or-treating and use it often. Trick-or-treating is something that is 100% optional for both kids and adults. If you do not feel safe or you do not feel comfortable, then you definitely should not partake in either trick-or-treating or providing candy. I would just add that certainly, we don't know, folks that do participate in Halloween don't know what the health or risk susceptibility of the residents on whose doors they might be knocking or ringing the doorbell, so we just ask that you exercise patience and understanding, because certainly, there may be some folks who, for private health reasons, may not be as comfortable opening the door to a few dozen strangers. So some news on that front, but it's really just the same approach that we've taken, just exercising, encouraging folks to exercise caution and good social distancing, hygiene, and mask-wearing as well. So.
Mr. Chair, a question on that?
Yes.
To the town manager, I may have missed it. Sometimes I miss some correspondence, the Horribles Parade, which all the children look forward to. Is there a decision on that? When a decision is made, will that be publicized?
The decision has been made not to have it. We can certainly put something out on social media, but certainly, given the size of the gathering, as you know, it always is held or has been for the last number of years, and the high school cafeteria, it's just not feasible in our environment today.
So something will come out from the Recreation Department?
Yes.
Hope, thank you.
All right, new business.
I would, I know we have a letter going to the acting executive director of the MBTA Advisory Board, noting that Selectman O'Mahony has been voted as our designee. I would suggest that maybe a letter of thank you be sent to former Selectman McCoy for his service on the MBTA, and also for his service as a Selectman representative to the Inhabitant Bylaw Committee and the Rink Committee.
Just a point of clarification, he is remaining on the Inhabitant Bylaw Committee, he just, Mr. DePalma is now the Selectman Designee for that committee.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know that Mr. DePalma made that appointment.
So I think it's more of an...
It's his, it would be Mr. DePalma's appointment. So Mr. McCoy was serving as a Selectman representative on those committees. He's no longer a member of the Board of Selectmen, so we shouldn't take Mr. DePalma's opportunity to appoint him away from him. So if he wanted to appoint Mr. McCoy, I would believe that would be, he would be entitled to that. But I think a letter is appropriate to go out to Mr. McCoy in thanking him as representing the Board of Selectmen on those committees. He's no longer a member of the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, the letter has been prepared. It was specific to his time serving as the representative on the MBTA Advisory Board, but if the board is looking to, I guess there needs to be a clarification on whether he continues to serve on the Inhabitant Bylaw Committee or not. My understanding was that he was continuing to serve in that capacity, but I could be wrong.
My understanding is correct.
True, true, I'm sorry.
I don't believe it was addressed at the last meeting.
No, I believe you're correct. I don't believe it was addressed at the last meeting. I thought it was supposed to be, but he was serving on the Inhabitant Bylaw Committee by virtue of his position as a member of the Board of Selectmen, representing us, and same with the Rink Committee. Now, he's no longer a member of the Board of Selectmen. I think it's Mr. DePalma's, you know, if he wants to, if Mr. DePalma wants to serve on behalf of this board as a member of the Board of Selectmen, since he's been on there, that would be great. And then it's Mr. DePalma's right, as we left it for everybody else, to make an appointment to that board, to fill Mr. DePalma's position, because we are now putting Mr. DePalma as our Selectman representative in the Inhabitant Bylaw Committee. Bylaw, which now creates a vacancy. We all put a person on that board and I think Mr. DePalma has a right to put a person on that board as well.
Thank you. Any else for the business?
No, should I make that in the form of a motion right now?
I mean, I can, we'll put it on a board to consider for next.
No, I'm making a form of a motion right now that a thank you letter would go out to Mr. McCoy for his service on the MBTA Advisory Board, the Inhabitant Bylaw Committee and the Rink Committee.
All right. I want to be wary of, we have sort of dueling directives because Ms. Omahaone is going to be reaching out to the, I believe, the acting or executive director of the MBTA Advisory Board confirming that there's only one appointee for the town.
I wouldn't be in favor of appointing Mr. McCoy to the Advisory Board, Mr. Chair. He has not attended any meetings. In the four and a half years I was there, he attended one meeting. So, I don't know why we would want to put him back on a board that he never went to. I mean, come on. You know, he's no longer a member of the Board of Selectmen. We have a member of the Board of Selectmen sitting to my left. Give him his due.
Well, there's, we don't need to exclude Mr. DePalma. I certainly think that Mr. DePalma probably wants to have a conversation with whoever he might want to appoint prior to the next meeting, correct? So, rather than having you make a decision on the fly and commit to somebody else, then certainly I think that would be something for a subsequent meet.
I'm not asking Mr. DePalma to make that appointment tonight.
So, I guess my comment is more, we have a meeting coming up, I believe on October 13th. And at that point, for a board to consider, or I guess really more of an announcement at that point, Mr. DePalma can nominate or appoint whoever he wants to be on the Inhabitant Bylaw Committee for that point. Or we can consider expanding it, I guess. We can certainly make sure that it finds its way onto the agenda in one way, shape or form. But there is a motion by Mr. Kira at this point. Is there a second?
Second discussion.
Discussion.
If I could, Mr. Chair, thank you. If I could just add that my understanding of this, just to take a step back, is that my colleagues at the time had appointed me as the Selectman appointee to the Economic Development Committee. When the day comes and I'm no longer a member of this board, it would be my understanding that I would no longer be a member of the Economic Development Committee because I'm not an economics expert. I'm a, I'm the designee from this board. And so, although I'm very proud to serve with my colleagues on that committee, when the day comes that I'm no longer a Selectman, I would imagine that the next person to fill this seat would make an appointee and then the board would then decide who would be the next designee to the economics. So, I just wanted to add that as my understanding, when we set out a couple of years back on a few other branched out committees were formed and we made some designees. So, just wanted to make that point.
Mr. Chair, yeah, that brings up a great point. I would do the same on the Rink Committee. I would step aside because I'm the Selectman's representative on the Rink Committee. That's just the right thing to do. And the other thing that we probably, just to muddy the waters even further, that we probably would need to make a discussion at another board meeting is how we handle the Selectmen's appointments. Now, we don't want to alienate a volunteer by any means. If someone wants to serve on a committee, we want them to serve on the committee because this community thrives on its residents stepping up and serving on committees. But we have, when Mr. McCoy was a Selectman, he made appointments to the Inhabitant Bylaw Committee, to the Rink Committee, to the Economic Development Committee. So, those were his appointments at the time. He's no longer a Selectman. Mr. DePalma is now in that position, so he should be given that same opportunity to make those appointments that was once Mr. McCoy's. So, I guess what I'm getting at is what we need to do is look at putting, we can't really go back and rewrite it, but we need to look forward. And when we do these appointments, we should probably look at putting term limits on them as we do with the appointments from the town manager, when he makes appointments to the Historical Commission or we get a whole host of various appointments from the town manager where it's a three-year appointment, a two-year appointment. We should consider doing the same thing. So, it doesn't put anybody in a bad position to say you're no longer needed on that committee because it's my appointment now, not the other person's appointment. And it doesn't prohibit you from reappointing that person. What it does is it just gives a term to that person so that if there's a new Selectman and it comes around that they want to put another individual in there, it gives them that opportunity. So, that's something that we should probably address in the future is how, when we make appointments, should we put a term limit on it? Because there's going to be turnover. We're not all going to be here and why should our designee stay there for 10 years and there's a new Selectman that never had a right to make an appointment of their own? So, I, you know, I think we need to somehow put a policy together for the board itself to look at that.
I may just add on to that to muddy the waters even more. I actually never made an appointment to the Hockey Committee because I was taking over Mr. Loud's position and he had made the appointment and I was okay with that. And Mr. DePalma was actually my appointment to the Inhabitant Bylaws Committee, so effectively my person is now the Selectman's, you know, representative. Does that mean I have to appoint someone new or, you know, do we both have to appoint someone? I think there are probably, I asked the question, I mean, I just want to preface all of this, because I asked the initial question to have this put on the agenda a few months ago, not necessarily to have Mr. McCoy removed from any committees. It was more just to make sure now that he was no longer a Selectman, that he wasn't a Selectman's representative in a role that he no longer possessed. And that was my initial question and I thought it was a good opportunity at that time to also see if there were vacancies on these boards, since we do have a new member of the board, to give him the opportunity to appoint people if there were vacancies, to appoint them. You know, it was one of my very first meetings with the Hockey Rink Committee that we were trying to get one representative and we ended up with two board representatives. So, you know, I appreciate what Mr. Kira is saying and that I think we need to have some type of outline as to how this works. I do think, you know, that the appointments run with the member of the Select Board, but I also feel, you know, part of me, the person I appointed to the Economic Development Committee is great and I wouldn't want to see him have to step down if I don't decide to stay on because he might want to stay on longer than I would. Not that I'm saying that's happening, I'm just saying, you know, I don't know necessarily in some instances, like Mr. DePalma, I had a point, I'd asked him if he'd be interested for the Inhabitant Bylaws Committee because I knew he was a longtime resident, had longtime participated in town meeting and kind of the democratic process here in Wilmington and I knew he already had that knowledge base that would be helpful for the situation. I wouldn't want to see him have to, if he were not on the board right now, have to step down if I were no longer on it. So, I don't know how we make that work. I agree, it's something that we should discuss more and make sure that everyone feels, like the Hockey Committee, to be quite honest, the people I would appoint are already on it. You know, my brother's already on it, Rob Peterson's already on it, the people that I know that are kind of in the hockey world in Wilmington are already a part of it. So, I didn't fight for a slot for that because I felt like it was already well-represented. And I would defer to Mr. DePalma. I'm not saying, what I'm saying about the history of all this because I want to take away an appointment if he has someone he thinks should be on any of those boards. I just wanted to kind of clarify that we could really get lost in the minutia of all this if we boil it down a lot. But I do think we need some type of guidance that's a little bit more than we have now.
Just one more want to clarification. On the Rink Committee, board members did not have individual appointments to that Rink Committee. We agreed to the certain members who were going to be on it and then we voted on who was going to be the board's designees for that. So, I did not appoint any individual to the Rink Committee.
Okay.
It sounds like there is some interest in examining the process of forming and structuring committees. So, my inclination is to put on a board to consider right in front of our next meeting, forming a subcommittee of this board to then examine committees, which I recognize sounds very much repetitive, but at the same time, there seems to be a lot of interest and my hope would that be, that subcommittee could then meet and then have recommendations that they could present to the board as to how to proceed going forward because this is certainly an issue that is capable of repetition. The Rink Committee was an ad hoc committee. The Economic Development Committee was essentially an ad hoc committee. There's no term or expiration of that at this point. The Inhabitant Bylaw Committee is required by our Inhabitant Bylaws to happen every 10 years. Our current Inhabitant Bylaw Committee has been meeting since January 2017 and they are continuing to meet, I believe. There was either a meeting that was going to be happening late this month or at some point this fall.
Two days.
Okay. So, they are still continuing to meet, but with respect to some, maybe some guidance for future prospective committees that may be formed, I'm inclined to say, why don't we put a, form a subcommittee for some, I guess, basic ground rules so we can have some, a structure from which to move going forward? So, and Mr. Kira and Ms. Omahaone, Mr. Hall, perhaps you could reach out to both of them to make sure that we can, I guess, move forward on the particular issues with respect to those three committees at our next meeting? Because this has tended to be the time of the meeting where this gets discussed, the last few meetings and certainly is not my intent to try and kick the can down the road. I'd rather just figure it out. I know on a certain, a few occasions, Ms. Omahaone, you and I have had discussions and I thought you and I were on the same page, but my apologies if we were not on more board to consider items relative to committees we're going to have.
No, I think we were, Mr. E. And I think, I wanted clarification as to what vacancies there were. And as I sit here, I still don't say that Mr., I assumed, I think, what you had assumed that because Mr. DePalma was now the Selectman's representative, they were just going to flip. But I understand where Mr. Kira is coming from, that that effectively is forcing Mr. DePalma to say that he would be appointing Mr. McCoy in that instance because he wasn't appointed other than being the Selectman's representative. So, I get it. I mean, I think he's been on it and if he wants to stay on it and Mr. DePalma doesn't have anyone else interested, it makes sense to have him stay on it. But I think it's worthy of further discussion. But that wasn't my, my initial intent was just to see what was going on in these committees and what vacancies existed so that we all were aware of them because we hadn't been getting regular reports necessarily from each of them. And I know some people had been stepping down and other people were being appointed and I just wanted clarification as to were there vacancies that were on these committees? What was the structure of the committee and kind of how were they doing? And that's what you provided at the last meeting.
And Mr. Chair, Ms. Omahaone, Ms. Omahaone brings up a good point that her appointee is now, could potentially be, we haven't made that clear yet, that he'd be our representative from the Board of Selectmen, was her selection for that committee. So, that would open up that vacancy for her to make another appointment, I would imagine, as well, as Mr. DePalma's opportunity to make an appointment. So, I still think we should send him a thank you letter at the very least for all for serving on those committees. I mean, essentially, he's, you know, no longer serving on those committees as a Selectman representative. Now, if we want to add him on at the next meeting, there's nothing to say that we can't add him on. But as far as I'm concerned, he doesn't serve as a member of the Board of Selectmen at this time and he was representing us as a member of the Board of Selectmen. So, he should be given a thank you, a letter for that. And then if we want to reappoint him, if there are those vacancies that you've asked to see if there were, then by all means, someone can make a motion to reappoint. But right now, a thank you letter is necessary.
We can make this very simple. Number one, as Mr. Kira and Mr. Bendel has said, when they become, when they leave or they're no longer a Selectman in town, they know they're going to be stepping away from those committees. That should be an unwritten rule, number one, because they are, you're no longer a Selectman. And if you want to stay on that committee as a resident, then you just make it known, like anything, that I'd like to stay on and then we can make the appointment. But as far as a Selectman, no longer being a Selectman and staying on a board that they were appointed to as Selectman representative, that's just logical, that they wouldn't be there anymore. But again, like I said, you can sit there and say, I'd like to stay on it. Can I reapply or however we're going to determine how to handle it? But as, you know, you're not representing the Board of Selectmen anymore. And that's all I have to say.
All right. So, you do have a motion by Mr. Kira that was seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Kira, perhaps you'd like to restate your motion? It has been.
I would like a thank you letter to be sent out for his services on the MBTA Advisory Board and as our Selectman representative to the Inhabitant Bylaw and the Rink Committee. I don't recall if he was on any other board as representing the Selectman, but if he was, we would add that to that thank you letter.
All right. Is all those in favor? Any other new business? Unfortunately, I have some.
I did receive an email from a Suzanne Neal at 1:08 PM today. I'll just read it. Dear Mr. Eaton, it was suggested that I email you directly since there is not enough time to get on the agenda for the Selectmen's meeting tonight. I'm hopeful my request might meet the guidelines for new business. I would like to pray with my friends at the Town gazebo on Saturday, October 10th at noon. This Public Square Rosary is sponsored by America Needs Fatima. It will be one of over 200, I'm sorry, one of over 20, 20,000 rallies that will take place all across the United States on that day. We will be inviting all the local churches in Wilmington. We will take the guidelines seriously by using masks and social distancing. Our advertising will include, please consider wearing blue and gold in solidarity with the theme of Fatima. This will be a religious event and not a political event. Thank you for your time, Suzanne Neal. So, certainly this was not anticipated by the chair within 48 hours, advance notice of this meeting. Would anybody care to make a motion to accommodate Ms. Neal's request to use the Town gazebo on Saturday, October 10th at noon? I would suggest that that be in consultation with our Health Director.
Chair, I'll make, Your Honor, is that late? Congratulations, Jonathan, you're now a judge. I would make the motion, but I would make the motion that we allow the use of the Town gazebo for the rally with consultation to both the Director of the Board of Health as well as the Chief of Police, just to make sure. I know the other rallies we've had, we've asked for that to happen, just in case there's a crowd issue or anything like that.
To be clear, this is not a, it's a prayer service, right?
Correct.
Okay, just.
I'm sorry, I thought you were going to say a prayer rally.
She, what was it?
Or a rosary rally.
She did say it would be one of over 20,000 rallies that will take place all across the United States, but it's, it is, I would like to pray with my friends at the Town gazebo.
Prayer service. I'll call it the prayer service. I move that we allow the prayer service at the Town gazebo with the understanding that she will consult with the Director of the Board of Health and the Chief of Police.
Second. Do you have a bunch of seconds? I'll give it to Mr. Bendel.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. All right, Mr. Hall, important dates.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Before Mr. Hall gets to important dates, should we reach out to our first appointment to see if he'll come to the next board meeting? How would you do that? Because we don't know if something happened to him, if he got sick or, and this is a, this is a new, a new place in town, Pizza Days, that are opening up on Ballaville Street. We want to make sure that they, should, can we reach out to them for the next meeting? Is that possible?
Yes, Chair, I have a new plan to contact the gentleman and confirm his intention, there still exists, to pursue this.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we take no action on the first appointment.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. DePalma, discussion. Only just in agreement with Mr. Kira's comment that we reach out to him and invite him to our next meeting. All those in favor? Unanimous. Now, Mr. Hall, important dates is about 45.
The first under important dates, October 7th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. October 10th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. October 10, brush drop off Old, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. October 12, Columbus Day, town offices closed. Next selectmen's meeting, October 13, it will be at the High School Media Room, 7:00 PM. October 14, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. October 17, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. October 17, early voting town hall, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. October 18, early voting town hall, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. October 19, early voting town hall, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. October 20, early voting town hall, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. October 21, early voting town hall, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. October 21st is a brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. October 22, early voting town hall, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. October 23, early voting town hall, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. October 24, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. October 24, early voting town hall, 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. October 24, last day to register to vote in the state presidential election. Registration accepted 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM and 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. October 25, early voting town hall, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. October 26, early voting town hall, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. October 26, Board of Selectmen's meeting, High School Media Room, 7:00 PM. October 27, early voting town hall, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. October 28, last day to apply for mail-in ballot. October 28, early voting town hall, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. October 28, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. October 29, early voting town hall, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. October 30, early voting town hall, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. October 31, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. November 3, state presidential election, polls open 7:00 AM, close at 8:00 PM. Shriners Auditorium, 99 Fordham Road. November 4, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Again, on the 7th of November, brush drop off Old Ma, Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. November 9, Board of Selectmen's meeting, High School Media Room, 7:00 PM. Octo, November 11, Veterans Day Ceremony, Town Common, 11:00 AM, town offices closed. November 12, brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. November 14, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
And lastly, our salute to services, Wilmington's James Davy is the Bronze Star Medal recipient for his work in Operation Inherent Resolve. Sergeant SPC Davy and his military dog conducted over 40 dismounted mine and IED clearance missions. He and his military dog flawlessly led the search of multiple buildings, routes and areas that ultimately allowed them to find 204 landmines, seven directional fragmentation charges, three 55-gallon barrels of HME, two mortars and 100-millimeter rockets totaling over 4,074 pounds of enemy explosives. His performance directly saved the lives of multiple U.S. and NATO personnel, and he is credited with finding of the greatest quantity of explosive by a mine-detection dog team in Iraq and in the history of the program. He was discharged as a sergeant, and our thank you to Wilmington resident, 2014 Wilmington High graduate, James Davy. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, just a, just a question on the important dates. I've noticed that the Board of Selectmen meetings are scheduled for the high school. Why are they not scheduled for here? We're, we're running this, finally, this is a, a larger space, more people can attend. Is there a reason why all of our meetings are now at the high school?
So, moving forward, we're going to be having, at least for the, the next three meetings, our meetings at the high school, that media room is already set up, so the amount of setup time that WCTV needs to do is greatly reduced. Many of the individuals from WCTV that normally are setting up and broadcasting their meetings are volunteers and are high-risk and would not be able to attend and set up. Tonight, the two individuals that are here are employees of WCTV, and that is a, a budgetary constraint for them, and I want to be mindful of that and also thankful of the work that WCTV puts in. I'm not making WCTV the controlling factor, but certainly the Wilmington High School Media Room is, I think, more, it is, what is designed to conduct these types of meetings. My conversations with Mr. Hall, we will be able to implement in-person public comments during those meetings. I did have a conversation with Mr. Hall about his comfort level of having a meeting where he is not in the same building where his office is, in case he needs to, as he has at, on occasion in the past, just jump into his office to gather something. But he has expressed to me that he is comfortable on the road, so to speak. So, at least for the next three meetings, we will be conducting at Wilmington High School, public health metrics, I guess not as, so long as public health metrics are consistent.
Honestly, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't understand why we're doing that. I, this, you know, that we pay, what is it, Mr. Hall, 5% of the cable bill goes to, to the, to run WCTV, and they're supposed to cover so many governmental events. You know, they should be able to set up here. The people that come here, I don't think are all volunteers. This is the town hall, this is a larger forum. I, and you're asking us to go into a smaller room, you're asking their volunteers to go into a media room which is smaller. So, I, I don't, I don't get it, why we're, we're going over there. And, and, is the school committee okay to us coming in and with the issues with the kids and Dr. Brand, and, and we have to enter in certain ways, and we're not allowed to have the public attend as they can attend here? How about those that are, are appointments? Are they allowed to, to come into that, that room?
So, I had the conversation with Dr. Brand, and he indicated that essentially the same rules that are applying to the school committee meetings would apply here, where individuals who are slated for appointments would be permitted to attend the meetings, and apparent, and as of Friday, is based upon, I guess, a decision that was made by Dr. Brand, they're allowing in-person participants, if they are so inclined, with the expectation that it's, it's one member of the public in the meeting at any time, and the remain, if there are others, that they have to remain in the hall, socially distanced, waiting their turn to come in and speak under public comments.
And, and with all due respect, I, I don't think it's just your decision alone, Mr. Chair. I think we should all take a vote as to where we're going to have this meeting. So, I, I would think that our next meeting should be here, and we can take a vote if you want to go over to the media room.
Mr. Kira, with all due respect, when Mr. Bendel was chair a year ago, he had made the decision to hold a meeting that did not end up taking place at the Wildwood School. It did not take place because Mr. Castella, Mr. Castella passed away, but that is within the discretion of the chair to determine where we should sit.
I don't believe that's true. I, I'll make a motion that our next meeting be here.
There's a second.
And then we can make a decision whether we go to the media room.
Motion fails for lack of a second. And that will have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Bendel, second by Ms. Omahoney. All those in favor? Unanimous. Good night, everyone.